All right, then I am going to call the meeting to order of the regular meeting of the Sanford City Council Tuesday, March fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two at six P. M. This meeting will be conducted by a remote video and teleconference pursuant to one M. R. S. A. Section four oh three B, two D, and section six of the Sanford City Council Rules of Procedure as amended and adopted August third, two thousand and twenty-one, reflecting recent recommendations of the U. S. C. D. C. and adoption by the State of Maine C. D. C. pertaining to the conduct of meetings indoors in the public space. Members of the public may join the meeting by phone by dialing one nine two nine two zero five six zero nine nine using meeting I. D. Eight one three seven eight six zero zero three three eight and password five eight six eight five three or via computer at the link provided on the city's website. Members of the public may also submit comments via the City of Sanford website at W. 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 W.
Kind of constrict the flow between them. So between them, we'd get some slightly faster moving water. Um, and it would also help provide just some diversity. So there'd be some areas where it would pool and the sediments would gather, which is good habitat. Um, and the wood itself will help provide some good habitat for fish and macro vertebrates. Um, and so here's a few photos of the installation of this happening. So this is the, the first base layer here, which um, has a log with the root wad still attached. Um, which again will help provide, those root wads will help provide some stability to the structure as well as just some good diversity of habitat. Um, the second layer was just um, hemlock poles kind of driven into the bank to again, provide some stability to the structure, make sure they stay where we installed them. Um, and this is what the finished structure looked like, um, with some extra brush added on top. Um, and these were just installed at the end of September last year. So we don't have a lot of data yet of how they've impacted the stream, but we look forward to continuing to monitor these. Um, and they were also, you know, cabled together and cabled to nearby trees rooted on the bank. So we've got um, a lot of layers of protection on these structures. Um, the second site that we looked at um, had a slightly different purpose. This was near Lebanon and Oxford Streets and it looked to kind of address this misaligned culvert, which was causing the stream to divert from its natural channel. Um, which you can see in this diagram here. So the, the red line on the left is the, the route that the stream was currently taking and the blue line on the right is where the original channel was and where we wanted to divert it back to. Um, so we worked with the same team of experts here and the plan was to install this series of log jams that would help divert the flow back into the original channel. Um, again, using wood instead of adding more hard engineering to this already impacted stream environment. Um, and so here's a photo. This is um, the day it was installed and you can already kind of see that there's a little bit of the, the water starting to head back towards that original stream bank even on day one. Um, so again, we look forward to continuing to monitor this and um, making sure that it follows the intended plan. Um, the other kind of construction project that we've completed under this grant project um, was installing this tree box filter um, on Kimball Street. And this is part of the West Side Village Reconstruction Project. Um, so it'll treat about um, seventeen hundred square feet of impervious surface. Um, and kind of how it works is stormwater will filter through both the tree roots and especially engineered soil media to filter out a variety of pollutants um, from that stormwater before it enters Goodall Brook. Um, and this photo here is actually from a similar tree box filter that was installed on Robert Street in twenty seventeen. Um, the one on Kimball Street was installed fairly late last fall, so it doesn't have the, the tree installed yet, but that should be up and fully functioning um, hopefully by this summer. Um, and then shifting gears slightly, one of the other projects um, that we completed under this grant restoration effort. Um, and this was done mainly by the engineering and the planning departments was to make this technical manual, um, which would be kind of a consolidated resource of various accepted practices and standards um, across a wide variety of construction and planning topics um, as this uh, general resource for, you know, folks looking to apply for permits or contractors, um, anyone that wants to look and see what the, the best accepted practices are. Um, and this is expected to be kind of a living document with these practices continually updated as, you know, technologies improve and we gain better understanding of the best practices to do things. Um, and as I mentioned, we continued the water quality monitoring program um, through this um, couple of years of the grant as well. Um, so a couple of highlights or in this case sort of lowlights, um, the dissolved oxygen levels at the three sites we looked at. Um, were sort of staying the same or decreasing slightly. Um, and E. coli, which is bacteria levels really continue to spike, which is something we're hoping to look into further in the future. Um, a couple of caveats, though, this doesn't take into account other factors such as precipitation levels, which would, you know, impact our results as well, not just the restoration efforts that we are doing. Um, and the, our last sampling in twenty twenty-one um, occurred before the installation of a lot of the projects I've just described. So we're hoping that future monitoring will show some of the improvements from the installation of those projects. Um, which brings me kind of to next steps. So we're kind of hoping to continue this restoration effort and hopefully apply for another three nineteen grant, which is through the main Department of Environmental Protection and the Environmental Protection Agency. And that's what's kind of funded a lot of this other work already. Um, some of the projects we're kind of considering, um, nothing set in stone yet, but hopefully hoping to do some additional in-stream restoration, um, maybe do some outreach along the the lines of pet waste. We have a feeling um, that that is contributing fairly significantly to the bacteria levels in the watershed. Um, and continuing that monitoring program to, to evaluate where we're at. Um, and also just yeah, try and find some additional funding sources for dealing with invasive plants in the watershed as well as um, further investigation of why those E. coli levels are so high and trying to track down some sources. Um, and that is pretty much it. Um, if there's any time I'm happy to address any questions, but I don't want to take up too much of your time tonight.
Thank you, Mindy. Um, are there any questions by counselors or?
No, just a compliment. That was an excellent presentation. I used to go to some of those meetings. So for the way back at the beginning of being a counselor.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, good job. Um.
Go ahead, Steve. Oh, wait. Did you have your hand? Oh, Jonathan, you want to say something?
Yeah, sorry. I didn't put my hand up.
No, go ahead.
So I just had a quick question about the, the cabling of some of that material to the trees. Um, have you accounted for the tree growth? Because I know it doesn't take too long for those to start chewing into the bark, um, a lot of times.
Yeah, that's a good question. I'm not a hundred percent sure how much they accommodated for that, but that's like something I'll probably follow up with the contractors on. I hadn't unnecessarily considered that. Um, but the, the folks that we went with, they you know, been doing these sort of projects for a good number of years. So I'm, I'm pretty hopeful that they would have considered that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Steve?
Yeah, in, in all seriousness, Mindy, if you could find a solution for the Japanese knotweed, my public works director might get a good night's sleep. I don't know how many times he's talked to me about the Japanese knotweed. And it just, just short of, you know, some spacecraft, you know, lifting it up and and teleporting it into space, but, but short of that, I don't know what what solution we're going to come up with that ultimately resolves that situation.
Yeah, that one is a very, it's very tricky species to, to deal with unfortunately. Um, there are some methods and it just, it takes a lot of time and effort for sure. It's a multi-year effort to really eradicate that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mindy. I think we're all set.
Thank you.
Welcome. Okay. Twenty-two dash one four three dash zero one, presentation to update the city council on Cycle Sanford. Who is going to do this this evening, Steve?
Yes, uh, Kristen Seer is here to present on that. And Kristen, I believe I've given you screen share to, to share the presentation.
Thank you so much. What a great presentation to follow. So many great things happening in our community. I'm just going to go ahead and put this. So my name is Kristen Seer and I am thrilled to be here to present on behalf of our team, Cycle Sanford. I am hoping to go through some introductions today, quickly introduce you to some new members, get a quick refresher on Cycle Sanford and what we're all about, review some key accomplishments in the recent past and uh, also most excitingly talk to all of you about some our proposed twenty twenty-two initiatives. So on this slide here are three of our founding members. I know all of you probably know and love Lee Burnett from his years of work as a trail advocate and on the Trails Committee, also as a, a grant writer for the city, Peter Chase from Nassau Bicycle Center, and also myself. What we're extra excited about are all of the team members for twenty twenty-two. Uh, some new and some familiar faces on the roster for this year. Uh, we are thrilled to be working with Brady. He's already brought a great energy and some key contributions to the team. Um, and we're all very excited to roll up our sleeves and, and get to work this year. Just a quick refresher on uh, what Cycle Sanford is all about. Our mission is to advocate for the safe and efficient bicycling in Sanford and Springville with a goal to create a network of both on and off-road cycling routes to induce the citizens of our cities to use bicycles not just for recreation, but also for transportation, thereby improving health, aiding in our environment and helping to promote economic activity. Uh, we do spend a lot of time focusing on infrastructure in our mission statement, but it isn't just about bike lanes. We also have an interest in safety education, not only for cyclists, but also for motor vehicle operators. Um, and then increasing ridership and awareness of the trail systems that we do have in place. I'd like to spend on the most of my time today on these last two slides that we've put together. This is a depiction of some of our key accomplishments since our inception in twenty nineteen as a uh, city subcommittee. We had a banner year in twenty nineteen. We kicked the year off with a design charrette that was facilitated by Main Bicycle Coalition, included members from Cycle Sanford, Sanford Trails, uh, different leaders from our community and from this team. Um, and we talked about opportunities to increase pedestrian and cycling sa- safety in our city, um, which helped to form a, a lot of our proposal work. We also have what I affectionately refer to as the Cycle Sanford Road Show. We did a lot of uh, lunch and learns with various community groups to help uh, introduce ourselves and talk a bit about the benefits, primarily economic benefits of uh, cycling infrastructure for municipalities. We met with the Rotary, Chamber of Commerce, Coannis, and our Economic Growth Council, and it was uh, really heartening. There, we were very well received. There was a lot of interest and, and support from these groups. And also in twenty nineteen, we kicked off our first annual Sanford Bike Fest, which uh, was a great success. Uh, the Bike Fest consisted of uh, guided rides on our trail system um, from the Springville YMCA to the New High School, the, and Regional Technical Center. But the uh, event was augmented with, uh, there was a bike jam, a BMX competition. We had a rodeo, a bicycle rodeo for children. Uh, as uh, participants entered into the downtown area, we had invited local businesses to set up a long Gateway Park and that lower parking lot of Midtown Mall uh, to really celebrate our downtown and um, promote the businesses in our downtown area. There was uh, food options and giveaways and uh, a lot of fun stuff at the Gateway Park. We had uh, over a hundred and fifty participants, which uh, for our first ever effort at this, and we received uh, countless feedback from participants about how uh, they were so pleased with the event. Many of them were completely unaware of some of the trail infrastructure that we already have in place. And it, it really went a long way in um, really piquing our community members' interest and what our city could look like with continued um, investments in cycling infrastructure. Um, we know what happened in twenty twenty. The world as we know it turned, turned upside down and uh, we weren't uh, we took a little bit of a break, uh, wasn't as uh, busy for us uh, since twenty nineteen due to COVID and some of the restrictions. Uh, certainly wasn't the time to be gathering and holding festivals. Uh, but a few notable things here for twenty twenty that I just wanted to touch on, uh, that really complement our mission um, was the uh, mural downtown across from the Gateway Park that was recently installed, which is really beautiful and a great contribution to the downtown connector and our future vision for the city, as well as the announcement of the twenty, of the Moussum Promenade, which certainly isn't uh, something that Cycle Sanford could take a, a solo victory lap on, but it's the, the, the vision is a culmination of uh, work and contributions from the Trails Committee and this team and other leaders in the community. But I wanted to nod to it because it is uh, the, the very vision of what Cycle Sanford is all about and what we'd like to continue to promote in our city. So looking ahead uh, with COVID nineteen behind us and some fresh new faces on the team, we have um, worked together to come up with three areas of focus for twenty twenty-two. Um, those are listed across the top of the slide here. The first is we'd like to put together a pump track proposal for our city's uh, councils uh, consideration. In fact, we've already drafted a preliminary charter and some ideas for consideration, and we're hoping to be able to present to the Municipal Operations and Property Subcommittee um, at the next available chance regarding that charter, uh, to better outline what we're thinking um, there. We've also selected Nassau Bicycle Center as one of our areas of focus. Um, Peter Chase is, is done an incredible job year round with the Bicycle Center. Uh, with everything from the Build a Bike Program to teaching kids how to maintain um, and fix bicycles to uh, guided bicycle rides with the rec department during the summers and the after-school bike club. There's no shortages of opportunities to continue to improve upon all of the awesome work that Peter has already put in place here. And we're really excited to uh, rally the troops and provide a little more support to the Bicycle Center so that we can um, continue to provide to those interested uh, youth and also expand the program. And then finally, we'd like to get back to having our Sanford Bicycle Festival uh, to uh, you know, attract new folks to Sanford to uh, participate in that and learn about our downtown and maybe spend some money while they're here, but also to continue with uh, raising awareness of our efforts and of the wonderful trail systems that are already in place here in Sanford. Those are our primary goals for consideration for twenty twenty-two. Uh, we have some secondary goals here listed as well. We'd like to continue with recruitment of members. Uh, more is more when you're talking about volunteer efforts. And uh, also, one thing that I didn't note on the key accomplishment slide, um, is that during twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, the team had made um, some significant documentation regarding uh, other areas of opportunity for infrastructure improvements. And um, it's just a matter of getting that formatted and pulled together for submission to the council and um, potentially included in the Trails Master Plan. Um, so that's on our agenda for twenty twenty-two as well. And then finally, um, just some organizational improvements, uh, being um, more, tracking our time more consistently, um, so that we can report back out uh, to our total contributions to the community. And also we'd like to prepare quarterly city council updates similar to this one to report out on our progress to the initiatives um, we've got listed here. So uh, with that, I'll stop sharing and take any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you, Kristen. An excellent report. Almost inspires me to get out on a bicycle. Um, any questions from counselors? Steve, you have it up. I have, Councilor Hanselman has her hand up. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And more a comment than a question, but I'm just really excited to see uh, your progress and your goals for this coming year. Uh, I know in the work with Friends of Downtown, there's excitement about the Bike Fest for sure. And then uh, you know, I, I have a kiddo that loves uh, pump tracks and we actually travel to destinations and communities that have them and um, spend money in those communities visiting. So I, I think that's a really interesting um, thought for here in Sanford. So thank you.
So I was going to ask, a pump track is one of those where you sit on them and you actually, it's like the old fashioned in the cartoons? Where they used to go on the tra- I'm, can you explain that? Because honestly, that's how I think of it, is the old one where they, they were going down the train tracks.
It's a, a pump track is a, it's usually circular, but it can be any shape, uh, track for bicycles. And it has a series of rolling hills and berms so that people that are on the pump track on their bicycle don't necessarily have to pedal their bicycle to get through it. You can use the momentum of the berms and the hills to pump, if you will, throughout the course. Um, they're increasingly popular. Um, they're popping up in communities uh, across New England or across the United States for that matter. And as um, Anne has mentioned, um, they do become quite of a destination point because uh, they are super fun. Um, it's hard not to feel like a kid when you're on them yourself and um, they're just, they're great fun.
So are you thinking, would that be an extremely expensive and difficult thing to, to do?
Um, expensive potentially, difficult, no.
Okay.
And that's in part of why we're putting together the charter is to really outline and take our time with the proposal. So the output for our efforts for twenty twenty-two would be a holistic proposal for the city that would include um, associated costs, maintenance, um, identifying potential locations, um, and all of those other considerations. I think um, it can be as big and as, as we want it to be, or it can, you know, it, the sky's the limit. Uh, but we'd like to put together a proposal of all of the different options for consideration, including funding options. Um, it's great to have Lee on the team because he does have his ear to the pavement on um, lots of various uh, grant opportunities to help fund it as well.
Well, I look forward to seeing that come before us then. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Okay, then we are going to go on to public participation. And this part of public participation is for items that are not on the agenda or up for public hearing. So if there's anybody here who just wants to speak about something else, I don't see any hands. And I will end public participation. Public hearings. So we have a number of, of um, public hearings that are about renewal applications or new applications that just have to go through this way. So um, I'm going to go through the list and then we have two at the end that will require um, more discussion, I imagine. So I'm going to I'll save my comments um, before I get uh, for, before I get to the ones at the, at the two at the end. Okay, so twenty-two dash seven six dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Afterglow Edible Company for a medical marijuana manufacturing tier-one license at nine Renaissance Way, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Seeing none, um, is, I mean, is there anyone to speak against? Jamie, did you want to comment on these at this point? So that we could have that comment for every single one and I wouldn't have to ask you again. These are issue, there are no issues with any of these um, public hearing.
Yes, you are correct. We, we did inspect all of these licenses. Um, they all passed inspection and they all are okay to proceed with the license renewals. And uh, I think there's two new licenses as well.
Okay, so no one to speak against, then I will declare this public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash seven seven dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Afterglow Edible Company for a marijuana manufacturing tier-one adult-use license at nine Renaissance Way, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash eight zero dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Vetted Maine LLC for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at sixteen oh nine Main Street, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash eight one dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Leaf Labs LLC for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit four fifty, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash eight two dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Heaven's Leaf Garden for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit four zero one, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash eight three dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Captain's Cannabis LLC for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at one sixty-eight Country Club Road, Unit E, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? I see um, Catherine Thomas, I see your hand up, but I don't think that is for these um, licenses. So I'm going to wait till we get to the public hearing that you submitted the letter at, okay?
Thank you.
I'm not ignoring you. I'm just, it's just not appropriate right now. Okay, did I finish? A public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Captain's Cannabis LLC for medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at one sixty-eight Country Club Road, Unit E, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash nine five dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Nicholas Zagami for a medical marijuana grower, grower-cultivator license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit five oh five, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash nine six dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Pine Tree Maine LLC for adult-use marijuana grower-cultivation license at twenty-two Smata Drive, Suite three, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash nine seven dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Pine Tree Maine LLC, Tyler Holden for a medical marijuana, marijuana grower-cultivating license at twenty-two Smata Drive, Suite one, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Um, Sue Cody?
Yes, I just wanted to make a clarification of the
I think that's the next one, Sue, isn't it? Oh, the Maine needs an E on it. Is that the problem with this, this one on twenty-two dash nine seven dash zero one?
Yes.
Okay, well, I have it in the correct writing, but it sounds the same when I'm saying it, so I didn't think it really mattered. And I have the correction for the next
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Sue. Okay, I'll declare, uh, the public hearing's been declared open. Those in favor, um, those against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one hundred dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Pine Tree Maine, Number Four LLC for an adult-use marijuana manufacturing tier-one license at twenty-two Smata Drive, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Um, is that Land, Land Race Cannabis Company to speak in favor or against this particular?
It's not in favor or against. It's just that you read it correctly. It should be Pine Tree Maine Four. It just doesn't show that on the meeting notes.
I know, I read it correctly. It's corrected.
Okay, okay, cool. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else to speak in favor or against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. If everybody could please um, mute.
Oh, Mayor, you're muted.
I apologize. Twenty-two dash one zero one dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Botanical Compost LLC for a medical marijuana grower-cultivation license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit five zero three, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Anybody to speak in favor? Anybody to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one zero two dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Cal and Company LLC doing business as Wisely Cannabis for a medical marijuana grower-cultivation license at eighty-one Industrial Ave, Unit A, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anybody to speak in favor? Anybody to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one zero three dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Melt Lab LLP for a medical marijuana manufacturing tier-two license at eighty-one Industrial Ave, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one zero Twenty-two dash one zero four dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Silverleaf LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivation license at eighty-one Industrial Way, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one zero five dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Prospect Hill Holistic LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivation license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit three zero five, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one zero seven dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Two Zero Seven Hydroponics LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivation license at one sixty-eight Country Club Road, Unit B, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one zero eight dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by High Octane Farms LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivation license at one sixty-eight Country Club Road, Unit D, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one one two dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Cano One LLC for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at twenty-seven Hancock Lane, Building one, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Um, is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one one three dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Highmark Farms for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit two zero three, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one one four dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by High Noon Farms LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivation license at twelve Smata Drive, Unit A, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one one five dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Grown East LLC for a medical marijuana grower cultivation license at twelve Smata Drive, Unit A, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one one six dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal app, application submitted by Lone Wolf Gardens for a medical marijuana grower cultivation license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit four zero three, Sanford, Maine. Declare the public hearing open. Anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one one seven dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Old Space LLC for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit one fifty, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Anybody to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one one eight dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new application submitted by Biscuits and Gravy for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at seventy-two Emory Street, Unit three zero three, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one one nine dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the new application submitted by Top Cut Cultivation for a medical marijuana grower-cultivator license at twelve Smata Drive, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. And there was one that was out of order on the agenda, but I'm taking it here because it's part of the consent agenda going forward. Twenty-two dash seven nine dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments in favor or against the renewal application submitted by Greenfellas Cultivation LLC for a marijuana grower-cultivator adult-use license at nine Renaissance Way, Sanford, Maine. I'll declare the public hearing open. Is there anyone to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Phew, okay. Next item on the agenda. Twenty-two dash one four eight dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments and questions on a proposed application to the main CDBG program for a community enterprise grant to improve facades on eligible downtown buildings. I will declare the public hearing open. Um, is there anyone to speak in favor? And I'm assuming that Mary Hastings I saw was here. Is that who's going to speak first in favor of this, Steve?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry. I thought Lee was gonna speak first and I was
Yeah.
Oh, okay. If Lee's gonna speak first, that's fine. I just didn't know.
Um, either way, however you wanna do that, Lee.
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, go ahead, Lee.
Um, good evening, Mayor Mistracchio and city councillors. Uh, this is a, a public hearing required by the CDBG process uh to get a comment about an application for a hundred thousand dollar community enterprise grant from the main office of community development. Uh, we are seeking the funds to address blight conditions and improve fac, facades at eligible downtown properties. It is a relatively small program, but it's important in fitting in with all the other initiatives going on in the downtown. There is a local match of twenty-five thousand dollars that is uh required to be eligible, and this will be provided by participating businesses, property owners. Um, to date, there are at least three property owners in the downtown who are interested in participating, and they have all written letters pledging to participate and contribute their own funds if the terms and timing work out. Um, the three of them are Matthew Goldfine, who owns the Shaw's Hardware building, and the former Who's's building, uh, Richard Rugazio, who owns the former Seven-Eleven building, and Greg Zimbor, who owns the former Bergeron Shoe Building. Now, if we do, and their letters of support were instrumental in uh being approved to submit a grant application. Um, if we do get the funds, the way it would work is that other businesses, other property owners in the downtown would be eligible, not just the ones who have written letters of support. Um, they would, they would apply with, here's what I would do to improve this building. To be eligible, they would have to also undergo a, a blight finding of their building as these other business own, property owners have uh agreed to. So the code enforcement officer would need to go around and uh determine whether their building was truly blighted. Um, and if it is, then they would certainly be eligible. The um, the ones who um were, you know, chosen to participate would be eligible for up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, and they could use that money to address, um, you know, rotting conditions on their siding, replacing windows, um, a variety of things, all of which would improve the visual appearance of the building as well as address um the blight conditions. Um, the program would be administered by Mary Hastings, Small Business Advocate at the Growth Council. Um, she would work with the property owners to, uh, you know, shepherd them through, make sure they get the permits. Um, and also work with them, cause all of these projects would come through the Design Review Committee to make sure that their uh improvements are consistent with the design guidelines for the downtown. Um, Mary would also um visit the projects during the implementation phase, and she'd actually interview um people working on the project to be sure that wages that they're paid are meet the Davis, Davis Bacon Act. And Planning Director Beth Delavalli and the Design Review Committee would ensure that the improvements meet the design standards for the downtown. Um, I also want to point out that this is not the first attempt to um set up a program for the downtown. This city has applied in the past for revolving loan fund um to um support downtown businesses, and we have not been successful at uh twice, twice applying. Um, both Mary and Beth are here tonight. If you have questions, and any one of us would be happy to answer questions.
Is there, um, I don't see any hands up from councillors. Mary, did you have anything that you wanted to add? Before I call on the councillors?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I, I um I'm kinda getting, I'm kinda behind the eight ball on this, only because I realized that this grant, that Lee actually applied for this grant from a conversation that we had much earlier. Um, and I do have, um, I do have an outline that just kinda has some, um, got some timelines, what you can expect in this grant. We just got invited to formally apply for the grant. It's due on April fifteenth. I'm trying to figure out if Lee's actually going to still be with us to apply for that or not, if that's gonna be done before he uh, before he leaves the city here. Uh, the awards won't come until fall of twenty twenty. Thank you, Steve, for putting that up. And actually, we don't really receive the money until spring of, of twenty twenty-three. And I kinda have a different take on, on this, on some of this money. Um, rather than being just for the business owners, I'd like to see uh Sanford kind of maybe uh bring this on to do some different types of things, you know, um, there's some work to do in the meantime before this money comes. Decide if then we want this to be a grant program where we just kinda put the money here and there with a couple of owners and not really make a big difference in the downtown. Or if we could do it as a loan program and maybe get some partnership with SMFA to uh do that type of, uh, to take care of the function of the, of the, of the billing. Um, I'd like to establish some downtown partnerships with stakeholders, with Friends of Downtown. Uh, work with planning, work with staff and planning, the Design Review Committee would be great, maybe some uh individual reach out to uh downtown, downtown um businesses and kinda try to get a feel for the downtown and do a more, you know, smaller things, but in a in a more condensed area. Uh, you know, like I, on this, like maybe up to three city blocks and do some, you know, create some design requirements and kinda do some exterior improvements along the way for many different people. Uh, Steve talked today in, in our board meeting at the Growth Council about some uh block purchases that we could then administer out to a lot of different business owners in. So I just would like to have some discussion about how, how the city would like to go along, you know, or like to go forward this money. Cause I think we find, we have, we have a, a ability to do something that's really gonna make a difference. That people will drive down, drive through downtown and go, wow, something's going on here, rather than gee, that building got cited and that one over there did, and that one over there did, but it really didn't make much of a difference. Uh, so that's where I'm standing on the grant. Um, I can't do it all by myself. The, the board for the Growth Council really doesn't want me taking on this project just as the lead. I certainly want to support and I wanna be there. Beth also said that she would lend some support to the project. But I really would like to see a buy-in from the Friends of Downtown and the stakeholders like I was talking about. Um, and I would like to just have some discussion on how you'd like that to go.
Well, I, I, all I can say is that I think that this discussion, and you, first you need to apply for the grant, and then we'll come back and then we'll decide how we're gonna implement it. But I honestly think, I mean, I was there for that discussion and I thought that that was gonna go forward, so. Um, councillor Martell has his hand up.
Um, how much was the um, the pay in that the, the city or the business owners would need to be responsible for? Was that twenty-five K out of that hundred? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And is, is that twenty-five K cap that was talked, discussed, um, is that a reason, enough for what some of these business owners will need to do? Um, it sounds like a lot of money, but it goes pretty fast when you're doing anything structural. So I just wanna make sure that you know, the numbers make sense for something, a project that's gonna be helpful.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I, I think it's not a lot of money. Um, and as much as it would be great to have a big impact on the downtown. Um, I think if we can get this money out at all, and having the property owners participate, um, is probably all we can expect. I mean, if we do you know, put a lot of expectations and um try to steer them, um, I don't know if they're gonna be that happy. Um, I think we do have some design guidelines for the downtown um that should ensure that it's done to a, you know, a high standard. Um, and absolutely, I, I see this as consistent with the Friends of Downtown and to the extent we could involve the Friends Group as, you know, guidance, um, that would be great, but it, it isn't a lot of money, um, when it comes to, you know, making facade improvements. Um, and essentially, the program is there to address blight conditions, take care of the worst. It's not to create a beautiful downtown. It's there to, to address blight conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else to speak in favor from the city or public? Steve?
Yeah, if I can. So uh, the success of this type of a program is in the simplification of it. So if I've, I've done these before, uh, they can be administrative uh burden. Uh, if you have those out over scattered across a number of, of business enterprises, doing a number of different types of projects. Each one of those projects that takes place, you have to certify their, their, the purchase of materials. Uh, let's say somebody had a window replaced, they did some painting, they put a sign up. Each one of those vendors and each trade within, inside of that vendor especially, has to be interviewed for Davis Baker, Davis Bacon certification as far as the payout and such into that. That becomes extremely administratively uh difficult for the staff that we have. That being said, as Mary was speaking earlier, a well-designed program that's done cooperatively within the downtown, and that's where I see the Friends of Downtown being an integral part of that. You make determination as to what these quote blighted buildings uh could, could do for improvements. You do a cooperative uh purchase for uh those improvement items. Let's say it's window box dressings and such under that. Uh, and you have a single vendor that's doing the installation and/or the improvements. That type of simplification keeps the administrative burden off, off our stretch staff. So I would just advocate for allowing the, the application to go forward, and we can work on that internal design between now and the time that the city might uh be invited to uh for the grant award. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, anyone else to speak in favor? Anyone to speak against? Seeing none, I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed. Twenty-two dash one four nine dash zero one, a public hearing to receive comments on a proposed amendment of chapter one twenty fees, chapter one twenty fees, chapter one forty-nine licensing, chapter one sixty-one marijuana, and chapter two eighty zoning. I'll declare the public hearing open, and before we begin. Um, excuse me, just one minute. Sorry, had to cough. Before we begin, I'm going to just say that this is a public hearing to hear from the public about this ordinance. I'm going to ask um, Steve to just introduce where we are and why we're here at this point and um, then I will invite the public to comment for or against. I will um, be enforcing a maximum of five minutes, we have a long agenda. And um, I invite people to use this time to participate, the, the time for the council to um, comment or discuss this will be under the agenda item later on. So I won't be having any back and forth between council and people from the public who are speaking. Clear the public hearing open? Am I still muted?
No, Ma'am Mary.
Oh, good, thank you.
So Steve's starting, right?
So Steve, could you start, please?
Yeah, I can do a, a brief introduction on this. Uh, this is an extensive amount of work. Our, our Planning Director Beth Delavalli is here this evening who has, has compiled all of the, the work product pursuant to the amendments to, to the various chapters that are called out here. Uh, so under chapter um, one forty-nine, you have the licensing, uh, chapter one twenty, let me start there, chapter one twenty would express a license fee for the initial application as well as the ongoing application for uh, retail sales of adult-use marijuana if, if it's supported within here. Chapter one forty-nine is the licensing chapter, would be amended to allow for and call out for that categorization of licensing. Chapter one sixty-one, which is the uh, the, the chapter of our code that deals with the marijuana uh, standards and such, uh, would be amended to allow for, for the first time, uh, the retail sales of adult-use uh, cannabis, uh, as a, as a category called out under state law. And chapter two eighty uh, would add that additional uh, allowance for retail sales into the land use code, so that's why the various chapters are called out. Pursuant to state law, uh, the community of, of Sanford has made the decisions on both medical marijuana, uh, as well as adult-use marijuana for the various uh, allowances. So for all of the categories that, that the state allows for a license to be created at the state and the local level, city has called out the majority of those. Uh, one of the exceptions still remains the, the actual retail sale of adult-use marijuana. So until such time as the city calls that out, i.e. puts forward an ordinance amendment that allows for retail sales, those are disallowed. Disallowed within your land use is disallowed, then uh, chapter one sixty-one, the state cannot issue a license to anybody that applies for retail sale license in the city of Sanford because that is not an allowable use at this point in time. So I draw the parallel structure there that when uh, post-prohibition, when all communities in the state were dry at that point in time, each community had to vote in this, the aspect of having retail sales of alcohol. The state, after many years of, of amendments and rulemaking and such under that, has basically put forward that same allowance as it pertains to cannabis, both on uh, on the medical as well as the adult-use piece. So our city has been calling those out in a timely fashion. Uh, as you could see tonight, what, twenty-five, twenty-seven licenses that went through public hearing process tonight, anything from cultivation to tier-one, tier-two manufacturing, um, and a whole host of other elements that are in there. The city has honed that, that licensing relationship to the, to the point that you can see twenty-seven, uh, twenty-five, twenty-seven of those hearings went through without a comment and, and those were all passed on the consent agenda. And that, that's the batching, that's the initial batch, pretty much that, that's all being inspected at the same time and then you have other license applications in between there. So the city had uh, started work on this in the past, was put on hold. Uh, the um, color of the industry continues to request uh, consideration for uh, adult-use retail sales. Uh, again, that was put on hold, it was brought back to the table, uh, was worked at the zoning level for an extended period of time to come up with a criteria that would go into the ordinance amendments. Uh, it was then put on hold again because of uh, lack of staffing in the Planning Department. It was recently re, re-resurrected, brought out the finished product, the draft that you have before you hear this evening was then put forward. Uh, and it's at, now at that point in time, there's been called out for a public hearing and a first read, it takes two reads. So a public hearing tonight for public input, based upon that public input, the uh, draft ordinances may or may not be amended and they may, may or may not be brought forward again. Uh, but pursuant to the second read would be that point in time that the uh, community, you know, before or after amendments, at the second read would be the time that the uh, act would actually be voted on up or down.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate that. Okay, so can you stop sharing so that I'll at least be able to see all the hands that are up? So I can have a general idea of how many people are going to want to speak here this evening? You could put your hands up so that I can put you in a um, queue if there is more than one or two. Right now, there are only two hands up. I see three, okay. I'm going to start with um, Catherine Thomas. I'll just remind you that um, could you please identify yourselves? Put on your video if you have it available and I hope you do. And I would like to know where you live and you'll have five minutes and I am going to, I hate to say this, but I am going to be keeping track. Thank you. Catherine Thomas, you're first.
Sure, I, I just had a, a couple of comments. One, I, I just wanted to mention, I just don't know if I can put this on record, that I read your licensing fees and I found that your hemp licensing was very out of whack with what could be done, um, very determining um, for farmers. Fifty dollars an acre is very high to pay and fifteen hundred dollars and fifty dollars an acre is an exceptional high licensing fee. It's really out of the ordinary, so I was hoping that you might take a look and reevaluate and look at some other states with their licensing. Most states charge fifty, two hundred dollars per hemp license and it's unlimited acreage. It's very restraining for a farmer if you put that fifty-dollar license fee per acre on there, so that was one comment I had in regards to the licensing. And two, I just wanted to note that we were opposed to um, the re-issuancing of those cannabis licenses. That's why I interjected um, on those. We were opposed to all those renewals based on the fact that there should be a disparity or a, a social economic study done for social equity licensing in the city of Sanford. So we were asking that um, the ordinance be amended to allow social equity into the application process, you know, that we've brought this to the attention um, of the city uh, on more than one occasion. And uh, again, we are offering to educate uh, the Town Council on social equity, what social equity looks like and why social equity is important in the licensing part of issuing marijuana licenses and the opportunity that are given to minority and African-Americans or any other minorities who would be applying for uh, cannabis licensing. So we're asking for the city of Sanford to perhaps um, consider doing a disparity study on the licensing uh, in relation to cannabis and perhaps obtaining a workshop or some council uh, or, or some information or education on social equity and what that looks like in regards to cannabis licensing. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Diane Connolly.
Yes, good evening, um, Mayor. Uh, my name is Diane Connolly, I'm a resident of Springville. I'm sorry, I do not have video this evening. Um, I just would like to say, first of all, uh, my comments this evening are not of anyone that is, that I serve with on the planning board, they are separate as a resident, in my views only, in my opinions. Um, as far as the retail marijuana and the shops and how many you would like to put in the town or the city, um, I would request that they stay out of the downtown area and I would like to see only two or three given. Those are my comments, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Diane. Okay, um, I see next Land Race Cannabis Company.
Uh, hi, this is Lindsay Holden. Yeah, my name is Lindsay Holden, I'm co, or in from Land Race Cannabis Company or Pine Tree, Maine. And we just had a couple questions. Um, we are in one of the conditional use retail zones, um, so we would have to have a traffic study done. I just wanted to find out whether or not the license fee of twenty-two thousand five hundred, um, which states it's non-refundable is, is that turned in? Steve had mentioned that maybe there's an application fee versus a license fee, but I didn't see the application fee. Obviously, twenty-two thousand is a lot to give if we're not sure if you guys are going to accept the traffic study. Um, so just some clarification on that. Um, and then July first, it shows the proration date for licensing fees for category-one licenses, which is, this is what, this is one of those. Um, if, is, is July first, is the July first date the date of an active license or the date the application is turned in? I guess those are just my two questions.
Thank you, Lindsay, for that. Um, we'll go on with the public comment, they're keeping notes on that and that's something that maybe at the um, end of the public hearing before, when I've heard from all the public, we can let Beth comment on those if she has answers for those, if that's okay, Beth?
Okay, thanks.
Um, I see somebody with just Jermaine up there, if they could identify themselves, please, you're next.
Hello, I'm Jermaine Yulen. Um, I'm a resident here in Sanford, Maine, of fifteen fifty-six Main Street. I've been seeing that a lot of uh, cannabis dispensaries and uh, grow-ups have been popping up around as, uh, as you all have heard and I'm definitely pushing for uh, some kind of support as, as far as social equity because I would love to like, jump in there and be part of, either at least considered to be able to get one of these permits and I just want you guys to know that I, I'm here and I would love to be able to reach out to anyone that wants to be educated in social equity. I'm offering that education, I have lots of uh, different uh, research and development from different states that has, have been doing it and has been successful at it and I just wanted you to know that I'm here.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor? Beth, did you want to answer those questions? If you could, if that's part of the public hearing, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay, I'm going to have to ask for a little bit of prompting on the second question, I was uh, writing down material, I was writing down my notes on the first one. So um, uh, Lindsay, the, the application fee for a license is separate for, from an application for conditional use approval and you would have to get the conditional use approval first. As the amendment is proposed for a conditional use, you would have to do um, a, um, you would have to do a traffic analysis. The two conditional uh, use properties are within the industrial business zone, uh, and the concern is that, and, and by the way, retail sales is currently a conditional use in the, on those two properties. And you would have to uh, demonstrate to the planning board that you are not generating an unreasonable amount of traffic that would disrupt the operation of the industrial uses within the, essentially the industrial park. So if you get that conditional use, then you would be eligible to apply for a license. So that would come first, you would know whether or not you're going to get that conditional use approved by the planning board. Um, if you do, you would then have to go on to do um, a licensing application with the city council. So that's the first question. I'm sorry, but my, what's the second question?
Oh, I, uh, the July first proration date for, um, yeah, so is it the time that I turn in the licensing application, the application for a license or is it the day that you grant the license?
I would, uh, I, I would have to defer, I think, back to Sue Cody who has been managing other marijuana licenses. Um, I, I would look at that date in the section I think you're referring to that says July first. Um, I would want to carry that through to the new article, um, four, which is the marijuana article, um, to make sure that those same dates work, but the, the intention was that there was some sort of prorating that would go on once you made your application after that period of time when the licenses are all uh, being reviewed. But I think Sue would probably be the better person to indicate um, when, what, when she starts that clock because that is already in place for a number of other licenses.
Well, that would be a good question um, for clarification, Beth, going forward for the, for the council in two weeks when we um, revisit this issue. I would appreciate hearing those answers and is there anyone else? I see Catherine Thomas's hand up, but I'm going to wait and see if I have anybody else. Usually I don't um, let somebody speak twice under public comment, but since we have no one else, I'll give you um, the floor again for another couple of minutes, Catherine.
Sure, I just wondering if anyone has a response to any of our questions about social equity? I know that Beth has been answering some questions for some other folks tonight, but I was just wondering if there's a response from Town Council or anyone in regards to social equity, um, if there's an, an, an answer of uh, anyone being able to look into social equity and what that looks like for the city of Sanford? Thank you.
Well, truthfully, um, I ju, I said at the, at the outset that there wouldn't be comments between the council and um, uh, people who are testifying under public hearing. Um, Beth answered some very specific questions about the ordinance. Um, so I would tell you that if there are comments from the councillors, they will come under the agenda item, but um, no, we're not going to have any back and forth.
Oh, no, I, I.
They all received your letter, they all received the letter, I forwarded it to all of them.
Thank you.
So they've all seen it, okay?
I appreciate that, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, um, any, is there any other hands up to speak for or against? Seeing none, then I'm going to declare the public hearing closed. Okay, consent agenda. Um, before I um, read that item, I'm just going to say that I have one addition that was inadvertently left off of the con, consent agenda but appeared on the public hearing and that was number twenty-four, Lone Wolf Gardens for Medical Marijuana Grower Cultivation License at seventy-two Emery Street, Unit four zero three Sanford, Maine. So the consent agenda twenty-two dash seven eight dash zero one, um, I would see no objection, the consent agenda is approved unanimously. Okay, sorry for the... Old Business. Twenty-one dash four zero seven dash zero one, order to extend the ordinance establishing a moratorium on mineral extraction lagooning and/or creation of ponds for an additional one hundred and eighty days to allow time for the Mineral Extraction Task Force to complete its work on development of land use regulations concerning this activity. This item must be read on two occasions and this is the second reading. I'll ask Steve for a brief explanation and then I will ask for a motion before the council begins discussion.
Yes, uh, thank you. So as was expressed uh, in the last uh, read, the first read, read of this, uh, the Mineral Task Force continues its, its work, uh, we're in meeting, nine meetings so far on this, we have meeting number ten scheduled. At our last meeting, this, this was uh, the majority of the time spent was the continued exploration of lagooning, what the community's definition, which it does not have yet, what the definition is, where lagooning uh, would be allowed or would be recommended to not be allowed. Uh, and a lot of that time was spent on understanding uh, the chemical reactions, the, the environmental issues that are, are unique to Sanford as far as lagooning is concerned. Uh, so uh, in support of the community, uh, the, excuse me. The Task Force continued work, uh, one of our Task Force members, uh, David Parent, who's the Director of the Sanford Water District, I've asked him to speak tonight so that the community via this uh, reading can have a better understanding of what it is that we're looking at as far as lagooning. So uh, Dave, if you're able to express um, as you did in our last Task Force meeting, what happens when you dig below the satur, uh, the unsaturated level in a, in a gravel pit here in Sanford, in the gravel-packed aquifer? If you can explain what takes place, uh, and that's, that's the primary reason why we continue to work on this.
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. We had this discussion at the last, uh, last Task Force meeting and actually had a We had this discussion at the last, uh, last task force meeting, and actually had a very good discussion, and, and I think we're, uh, we're actually working towards a compromise that everybody is on board with, I believe, which, uh, which I wasn't sure would happen, so I'm, I'm pretty encouraged with that. So, what we are talking about, and I guess what the council discussed at the last meeting is, is the New NAM, uh, mitigation site that the Turnpike did. And, uh, and the first thing I wanna say is it was just horrible what they did there, not only to the landowner, also to the city. Uh, they did this not only with the support of the Maine Department of Environmental Protection, but at the encouragement of the Maine Department of Environmental Protection. Um, we predicted exactly what would happen there. So if, if, if you rise above, which is hard to do, because I spent over a decade of my career fighting with the Turnpike Authority to make the great pairs of the Sanford Water District whole again, was not a fun process. Uh, but if we can rise above that and look at what happened, um, we predicted it would happen before it happened. That's why we didn't want them doing this site. What they did is they, they removed the unsaturated zone, which are the soils that are above the water table, quite simply. Uh, they're not saturated with water, and they dug down into the saturated zone, so into the water table, and they created ponds there. When you do that, you create what's called a reducing environment. So the soils, the gravels in Sanford have natural iron, manganese, and arsenic in them. It's tied up in the soils, and as long as that, uh, remains well-oxygenated, it stays in the soils. Uh, when it, when you create an anaerobic environment or a reducing environment, which is just what the Turnpike Authority did to us, uh, they did lagooning. Um, that iron and manganese, in this case, it was mostly manganese, dissolves into the water and ends up in the, in the public drinking water well. So that's, that's what happened at New NAM. Um, they, they accelerated the process, because they very quickly removed all of that, very quickly created the pond, but that's a process that would happen with any lagooning that would happen. Now, we had a public water supply next to that, so we are moving the groundwater, uh, much more quickly, uh, through the formation than you would if it was just private wells around it. But nonetheless, the water would, once you, once the manganese is in it, stays in it, and it would eventually make it to any, any private wells, uh, elsewhere in, in the aquifer. The, the other interesting thing that I mentioned, which, which everybody, uh, seemed to find of great interest is having an, an anaerobic condition in, in an aquifer is not unusual, but normally it's down deeper. So when we, uh, when we look for water, um, and we, we do test sporeings, they come up with what they call, what they usually refer to on the logs as gray soil, and that's when they get into that anaerobic zone where, where the metals are starting to dissolve into the water. And when they see that, you do not wanna put your, uh, your screen and your pump down that far. In fact, when we developed our Burn Your Road wells, which are the ones that the main Turnpike Authority paid for twelve years after destroying our other one, I hope I don't sound too bitter on that, but I am, um, we put two wells in so we could kind of, kind of skim off the top of the formation and not get down deep into the anaerobic zone. So what happens when you do this lagooning is you, you bring that anaerobic zone right up to the top of the formation and, and end up introducing those, uh, those metals and, and sometimes arsenic, if it's there tied up with the metals, into the groundwater. Um, so, so when you're looking at the, the significant sand and gravel aquifers located in Sanford as part of the Glacial Outwash Plain, and we are a little unique in Sanford with that, I would not think that we'd wanna allow that, those significant sand and gravel aquifers, which have been mapped by the USGS. Uh, and, and when I explain that, the people from the gravel industry seem to, uh, actually kinda seemed okay with that, that if they could find gravel outside of these aquifers, which are a special feature, um, that, that then they would be able to pursue it. So we haven't nailed this all down, and I may have already said too much about where we got in that discussion. Uh, this is a map I did that shows the, uh, the two sort of fingers of the significant sand and gravel aquifers that go through Sanford. The, uh, the blue and white dots that you see are our public water supplies. The, uh, the blue hash marks, light blue and dark blue, are wellhead protection zones. So you can see that we, we have public wells quite, quite well spaced throughout both those fingers of the, uh, of the aquifer that come through Sanford. The only reason there isn't one in the middle of the, uh, what would be the westernmost one is because it's downtown, and it wouldn't be very smart to put a public water supply in the middle of downtown behind the city hall or anything. So the, the green hash marks that you see are where the gravel pits are. Uh, the one that's near the South Borough line in South Sanford and Southwest, that red area is, uh, in, in the public, the purple area, the hash marks, is a water supply for the North Borough Water District. So throughout these significant sand and gravel aquifers, there are public water supplies. There are also private wells, uh, and it, it just doesn't make sense to take that kind of chance when there's public water supplies in the vic, in the vicinity. If you're outside of those significant sand and gravel aquifers, and you, you happen to find some of the formations that are elsewhere in the state, uh, pockets of gravel, I certainly wouldn't be opposed to somebody going through the process to see if it makes sense environmentally to do that. But in those aquifers, I just, I don't see how it would make sense to, to allow someone to go down a road that's very expensive to go down, only in the end to be turned down. Was it, was there anything I missed, Steve, or?
Nope, no, thank you very much. Uh, Madam Mayor, you're still muted.
Thank you. So, um, is there anybody? I'm, I'm gonna ask for a motion before the council begins discussing this, unless there's some other information that you think we need before we make that motion, Steve.
Well, as Chair of the, of the task force, uh, so the, the lagooning, uh, at this point in time, the way the discussion is, is going in the development of the draft ordinance is the lagooning is not a no, that it simply recognizes Sanford's unique aspects as far as the gravel-packed aquifers are concerned, uh, so it needs to call that out and recognize that. Uh, I believe the definition, uh, will allow for lagooning outside of the significant gravel, gravel-packed aquifers for all of the reasons that Dave Parent has stated here tonight. So relatively comfortable that that will ultimately be the outcome, but I'm, I'm waiting for the task force to finish this work, because we do have, uh, two exceptional industry representatives on there that have operations not just in Sanford, but in other communities as well. Some of them are actively doing lagooning now, so they're very familiar with those practices. Uh, there's a state permitting process involved in that and such. Um, and we, we have done everything to preserve the, uh, unsaturated zone, the five-foot, uh, zone, as far as the state calls out, as does our current ordinance, as does the draft ordinance that we've been working on. Uh, again, based upon the exceptionally strong ordinance that the city of Augusta had developed a year, a number of years ago, has been our guiding, uh, ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Um, do, can I have, ask for a motion to approve?
Move we approve for second reading.
Thank you, Council Stackpole. That's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that, not a mayor.
That's a second by Council Hanselman. Discussion by the council. Any questions? Um, you're muted, Maura. Are you not talking? Oh, okay.
I'm not talking to you.
Okay. Any hands up? Anybody wanna say anything? Being none, then I'm gonna call it for a vote. Council Brink.
Yes.
Council Martel.
Yes.
Council Hanselman.
Yes.
Council Stackpole.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley.
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. And I wanna just thank the task force, and thanks, Dave, for being here this evening, um, and good luck on completing your work. New Business. Twenty-two dash one five two dash zero one, order to establish and make appointments to a charter review committee pursuant to section two one nine of the Sanford City Charter. Um, Steve, I'm gonna let you start this off before I ask for a motion and, and give the rest of the information.
Sought to section two, two one nine, it calls for a charter review each ten years. So this is not the establishment of a, of a charter commission, which could, uh, do both, um, amendments and revisions. This is the call out for a citizens' committee, citizens' committee to be appointed by the council to review the, the current charter and ultimately make recommendations to the city council for, uh, potential amendments or, or, uh, not revisions. They can't do that, but potential amendments to the city charter for which the council could take under advisement, and so choose to move those forward for a referendum vote, should those amendments, um, be supported by the council. Absent that, there's a citizens' petition process and/or the re-establishment of a charter commission. But for this process that's called under, uh, called out under two nineteen, it is for a charter review committee, uh, and again, they will review the charter, looking for potential amendments. So the difference between an amendment and a revision, an amendment, uh, can make, uh, substantive changes to the charter, but it can't change the shift in the dynamic of the power structure, uh, and the levels of responsibility in there. Uh, so, um, having done a number of, of these in the past, uh, I would work with this charter review committee, uh, as they, uh, work and discuss on the, the charter, make any recommendations that I could, uh, act advisory to them, and then take their work and put it before the city's, um, legal counsel, and have that reviewed on an ongoing basis, or to subsequently come before the city council. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and the, I will just, um, name the people that we've appointed, and when I've, I've finished that, I would really like to have a motion to approve, um, uh, forming the charter review committee with the, um, people so appointed. Um, the appointments are as follows. Lance Honig as chair, more, Deputy Mayor Maura Hurley will serve as vice chair, um, Council Robert Stackpole, the city council, another city council representative, David Parent, Joan Hamlin Chapin, John McAdam, or Jack McAdam, sorry, Paul Demers, Kimberly Lechance, and of, and Steve Buck in an advisory man, uh, manner. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move, Madam Mayor.
Motion by Council Hanselman. Is there a second?
Jonathan, second.
Second by Council Martel. Any discussion by the council? Yeah, the, I, I, yes, Council Hanselman, go ahead.
Mute, mute, mute.
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the, uh, folks willing to be on this important, um, commission for the city, and I just wanted to clarify, Steve, your commentary, i- i- is this process one in which we can review the budget process in particular that we've discussed previously? Thank you.
It, it is, and, and just to speak, speak to that initially, it's been reviewed before, so you can change the, the composition, timing, and other aspects of that pertaining to the budget committee and the process. What you would not be able to do, uh, because that would get into a revision, is who ultimately approves. So if you wanted to change the council's ability to ultimately approve that, uh, that budget recommendation, that's a revision, that would legally be called a revision. So, but you could change the structure and timing and other aspects of the charter review committee, excuse me, of the budget review committee.
Thank you.
Um, um, Diane, just wait a minute until the council's done discussing, and then I will give you a chance to ask your question. Um, I, you know, I just wanted to say that this committee will set their own schedule, but they will meet in public with all of, that that entails, because this will happen with as much transparency as all the other meetings that we have and all the other work that we do. So, and that will all be arranged, and the city manager will make sure that that happens. But, um, there is a timeline, because I think they need to be, um, pretty much done with their work by July in order to get it to the council so that we can get it on the ballot in November. Is that correct, Steve?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay, um, Diane, if I don't see any other councillors with questions, I'm gonna ask Diane Conley for her comments.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, it's Diane Conley from Springville. I just wanted to ask a clarifying question, if I may. Can a citizen recommend an amendment to the charter during this process?
No, um, I would imagine that there will be public comment that they will take at this, at this committee, but that, uh, that, and there will be a process that they will be able to, um, listen to the public. So that is my understanding.
I understand.
Um, Madam Mayor, I would assume you'd have some sort of a public hearing at the very beginning, and then when the work is done, you'd have a public hearing about what was cut, what was developed. Um, that would be a smart process to have, so I suspect that'll be part of our discussion.
I think that their process, oh, I see the, the, the appoint, well, the proposed chair has his hand up. Lance, go ahead.
Uh, hold on, I need to start my video. Apparently I can't start my, oh, there I am.
There you go.
So, my quick question would be, I guess, in follow-up to Diane's, as part of our work, are we allowed to solicit feedback from the community at large, either, uh, individually or through social media or otherwise, outside of public meeting?
I think that that would be up to you to set that process. I'm kind of putting it all in your hands. The city can ma, can, the city manager will be there to advise you on whether, you know, it's legal or whatever it is that you're doing, but I say the more community input that you can get, the better, but it's the work of the, of the, of the, um, uh, you, it's your work, it's your task, so.
I just wanted to ask the question, and maybe that would help, maybe that would help Diane.
Okay.
So in serving in that, in serving in that advisory capacity, you know, that it, we, I would bring the administrative support as well. So if, if you wanna set up a public hearing process and do the, obviously, we'll do the advertisements, set up those processes for you. If there's something that, that, uh, you think social media could benefit, Jordan, Jordan can assist with that. So we'll, you know, those resources will be at the disposal of the committee.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second? Any more discussion? I'm assuming, okay, great. Then I will call the roll. Uh, Council Brink?
Yes.
Council Martel?
Yes.
Council Hanselman?
Yes.
Council Stackpole? You're muted. Council Stackpole, did you vote?
Um, yeah, I'm sorry, I was frozen for probably the last thirty seconds here, so, and then.
Oh, okay, we're just voting on this.
Coincidentally, I unfroze just as you asked me what I, what I, uh, uh, gonna vote for, so, uh, yes, but, uh, I apologize.
Uh, that's okay. Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Thank you all for agreeing to serve, and good luck. Look forward to seeing what you come up with. Okay. Twenty-two dash one two zero dash zero one, order to accept the bid by O'Brien and Sons in the amount of eighty-one thousand fifty dollars for the addition of new play structures at Benton Playground. Uh, Brady, are you gonna be the one that presents?
Yes, um, so some, some quick background, the city ripped out old tennis courts at Benton Park, um, on the Kimball Street side to be replaced by a new playground. There is eighty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars remaining in the CIP budget that was meant for this project. Um, this went in front of the subcommittee, the Municipal Operations and Property Subcommittee on March eighth, and they were in favor of this, but suggested to find a quote, um, on some fencing to fence in the playground. And in doing so, after talking with Brian, we had a quote, um, from last year for a little under five thousand dollars, and then we were, we were told to increase it by about five hundred dollars to bring the total of the fence to five thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy cents. Um, we would like to, we would like to go with O'Brien and Sons. We have three playgrounds around the city that are currently from this company. They've been good to work with so far, um, and the design of this playground is by far the, the best one that we received, and it also, it has a reflection swing that you And it also, it has a reflection swing that you can see in the top picture, the top right, where a child and a parent can sit facing each other. And that was proposed by the recreational advisory board in, I'm not sure when, but prior to me coming on board. So this is the, the only playground that has that option or that, that swing. And it also has monkey bars, which none of the other ones do. But it's, it's the biggest, it's the best playground, and we look forward to going with O'Brien and Sons, depending on what you guys think.
Thank you, Brady. And did, did it, did you say you're going to do the fence?
Um, yes. Well, we.
Excellent.
We'll need, we'll need to come up with the money somewhere, but it might have to be a phased project. But yes, we plan on fencing it in.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Hurley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brink. Discussion by the council.
I'm thrilled about the fence, and we'll see if we can help you find some funds for that. We recommend it because it's a little kids park, and it would be nice for parents to just kind of let them run wild while they just don't have to worry about them running away from the actual park. But it's a great park. I grew up until I was five in that neighborhood, and we used, we used to be able to kind of run free in the neighborhood back then. This would have been a great playground, and I'm excited for the children in that neighborhood and the parents.
I think it will be a well-used one.
I walked down there after our meeting a couple of weeks ago, or last week, and it is currently fenced in on three sides, so it would just be connecting the two sides together. So it's not as much fence as I originally thought that we need.
Yeah, and I thought after the fact too, Brady, that one of the problems can be animals that wander around at night and do their business in there, and this will definitely cut down on that.
Absolutely.
The woman from the Good Old Brook made a comment about the animal issue, so I suspect it's factual.
Counselor Hanselman?
I just wanted to let folks know that this is part of the overall, like a long-term park improvement plan, I believe. So we're, we're slowly tackling a lot of those projects. There are really great improvements to our parks. I think it's exciting. And thank you, Brady, for jumping in, you know, kind of headfirst into this project.
Okay. Any more discussion by the council? We have a motion and a second. Seeing none, I'll call the roll. Counselor, Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel? Counselor Martel? Oh, you're muted, but I see your mouth moving. Is that a yes?
There, thumbs up.
Okay, Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Thank you. Can't wait to see that happen, Brady.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Twenty-two dash one two one dash zero one. Order to accept the pen and ink change to the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport Ultimate Airport Layout Plan to add future land acquisition for aeronautical development on parcels R-18A twenty-two C and R-18A twenty C. Is, who's doing this this evening? Is Allison here?
I'm calling Allison Navia to present.
All right, there you are. Go ahead, Allison.
Good evening, I'm Allison Navia. I'm the airport manager of the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport. Tonight I bring forward for your consideration a pen and ink change to the Sanford Seacoast Regional Airport's, what we call UALP, the Ultimate Airport Layout Plan. This was brought before the property subcommittee to discuss a potential funding source through the airport terminal project with the new infrastructure stimulus that's coming out from President Biden's administration. There's a potential that we could receive funding to pay for ninety percent of the acquisition. That is due on March twenty-eighth, if we want to pursue that funding. What I would like to do, there's of course always a couple of different steps that need to take place if you're going to pursue any kind of federal funding through FAA. And step one is always to have that development shown on an approved layout plan. So I updated the layout plan last in two thousand fourteen. The big thing that we changed then was to add the solar project, and that was a last-minute add, kind of similar to this. Part of our business plan that was written in two thousand sixteen, and then we updated last year in two thousand twenty-one, included the purchase of this land ultimately, if there ever was a funding source and opportunity that would present itself. So to be able to go those next steps, this is that first baby step to get the, the map updated. And I think I attached the map to the backup, so you can see exactly what, what it looks like. There's tons of layers to it, and it, it shows the city's idea for everything that the airport could possibly be if we had unlimited funding for twenty years. So that's what, that's what that map shows, and it's that first tentative checkmark in the yes box from both the city council, the FAA, and from the main department of transportation. So this would be step one to have that on Ultimate Airport Layout Plan as a project that we could pursue funding for. I would pursue the grant application before March twenty-eighth. If we get it, excellent. If we don't get it, there's no obligation to do anything with it. We would just have it shown on this colorful map there that if we want to pursue it at some point in the future, it would be a pre-approved project. There's two parcels there. It's an open field. One of the parcels contains the little stub road that comes off the signalized intersection. The other parcel is, I don't know if you'd call it landlocked, what the DOT or the, the Public Works definition of it would be, but it has no curb cut onto Route one oh nine, so it would need access over that middle piece to be able to get to it. One of the huge benefits of this, these two parcels, is that the signalized intersection already exists, and there's already a left-hand turning lane that's built in there if you're coming from the east headed west. And then the, the same thing, there's a turn, multiple lanes, some that go left into Walmart, and then the other ones that, that you could turn right to go into the project or into the parcel. So the full proposal for the funding opportunities, so this is zooming out into the big picture. What I'm asking for tonight is the approval just of the concept of the project to purchase the land, so that I can go for the grant and see what happens. The grant is going to be a comprehensive development objective, which FAA is giving priority. It is a competitive process, so we'll be competing against probably maybe a thousand other airports across the United States. I don't know how many are prepared to do something like this, and I really like this project because we check a lot of the boxes that they're looking for in this notice of funding opportunity. So the, the project would have three phases. The first phase would be purchasing the approximately six acres. The second phase would be the design and permitting of the area and what it would ultimately look like. And then the third phase would be construction of a dedicated access road and a small terminal building. And that's the, that's it in a nutshell. So it would pave the way for us to do more public-private partnerships. We'd be looking at a big investment from either a fixed base operator or business of some sort that would want to build a large clear span hangar that would fit multiple jets inside of it. That's what we're missing as part of the, the piece of the puzzle here. One of the other things that we're really looking at that keeps aircraft from coming in during the winter months is our lack of any de-icing capability whatsoever. So even if we had trucks to do the de-icing, we don't have an appropriate ramp system that would catch that effluent that comes off, so that it wouldn't go and infiltrate into the water system or infiltrate into the stormwater. So there's environmental benefits to it and really a good economic incentive if we can, if we do it in a phased way and we, we grow as the demand shows itself. And that's what the proposal is. Take any questions?
Uh, thank you, Allison. I'm going to just ask for a, a motion first to approve.
We approve.
Motion by Counselor Stackpole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Brink. Any questions for the airport manager? Um, I just have to say, Allison, I'm just, I am really excited about this, because I do think that if we were to get this grant, it would, it would be, it get approved, we would, it would take our airport to a, to a whole other, a whole other level. So I'm going to keep my fingers crossed. Anybody else have any comments or anything? Seeing none, I will call the roll. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Got a lot of work ahead of you, Allison, so good luck.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Twenty-two dash one five one dash zero one. First reading. Proposed amendment of chapter one twenty fees, chapter one forty-nine licensing, chapter one sixty-one marijuana, and chapter two eighty zoning. Opportunity for the council to comment. It is just the first reading. There will not be a vote this evening. It will appear on the, on the agenda in, in two weeks. Counselor, Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Hi. First of all, I, I gotta say, I was, I was supportive of the city working on this, because I think it's better to be ahead of an issue than behind an issue. And I, you know, retail marijuana is just, it's one of the new businesses we have to, you know, we have to face. I actually felt when we wrote our regular ordinance about marijuana, we established the overlay zones, we took a hard look at, you know, the properties themselves. I thought we did a very good job, because we, at the time, we were thinking, you know, we want this business to be a part of our community, but not the entirety of our community. And so, you know, as we've discussed the locations of the retail sales, I originally thought one or two locations. And, but as we wrote a very thoughtful ordinance, I thought the, the process we used to discuss the retail sales was also a very thoughtful process. You know, we established these overlay zones, we used the underlying zone in order to establish what could be done there, et cetera. And I think the retail, you know, allowing retail in those locations that allow retail or have a conditional use for retail, you can meet, meet those requirements is, was a good plan. So I'll just say, I thought we did a very good job with this. So my concern and my, and why I'm still on the fence about whether we make that final decision and we allow, actually allow retail sales in our community using this ordinance as the basis, is that if there's a successful challenge of the retail sale portion of the ordinance, I would be extremely concerned, because I wouldn't want the entire community to be flooded with shops. I think that's a huge negative to the community that we're trying so hard to have a wide variety of businesses, a wide variety of people living here. You can't just be a one-horse town. We know that doesn't work. We lost the mill in the fifties, and look what, how devastating that was. So I don't know if this is a question for legal or not, but I would want to know that all applications for retail sale stores in the queue or in proposed, in proposal at the time of a challenge, say the challenge was successful to our ordinance, I'd like to know that they, you know, there's a quick process by which to pause it all, because I would not want a flood of the market of where retail can go just because an ordinance, you know, someone disagrees with it, and we need to take the time to look at it again thoughtfully, because that's what you do in a community, is you look at how you want your community to use space so that the space that you're using for certain uses works well with what's near it. So I would want to make sure that, that, I still am very uncomfortable that that isn't a problem after watching what Portland has gone through. So that's my big issue, is that making sure we have some, some ability to relook at the ordinance, should there be a successful challenge to the retail portion of the ordinance. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions by counselors? Counselor Hanselman?
Thank you. I just want to touch upon the social equity piece of this. Equity in general is, is something that feels important to me personally across all different aspects of our community. But I, I, it's my understanding, and I'm, I'm looking for confirmation, because I'm not an expert in cannabis issues, I'm looking for confirmation that Maine does not have social equity as part of their rules or legislation. I'm not seeing anything when I tried to find it. And I, you know, my understanding, just having done some digging, is that social equity is really about communities that had disproportionate number of folks that were harmed previously. And I think maybe that's the missing piece in our community, perhaps. But I just want to, you know, give voice to the equity piece of this and make sure that we're doing the right thing in terms of following Maine's legislation on it, which I think we are. And then if, if city manager Buck has any concerns about that from our ordinance standpoint, I would just want to make sure we were aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hanselman. And to answer your question, the state law does not address that issue at all. The main issue that we need to address, as, in my opinion, as a council, is whether we are going to decide to opt in to retail sales, just like we had to opt in to sell liquor. So, and that was ultimately what we'll be voting on in two weeks. So any other questions or clarifications or information that counselors need? Counselor Brink?
I guess I have a concern in how it would impact our community, because if all the lists that we've just approved who can sell medical marijuana, and they're now going to be allowed to do retail, it is going to be peppered throughout all of our community. And I just can't fathom the amount of problems that is going to bring with it, just knowing how many patients we see coming through our doors who are on medical marijuana, and how many other people would then purchase it for recreation? And what is that going to bring into our community? And we are already having problems with budgeting, with how many police officers need. How is that going to impact the fire department? What is it going to do to our hospitals? This seems like a much bigger thing, I guess for me, it seems like a much bigger thing than just approving this during our next meeting. It seems like there should have been a whole big study done on the impact, like we did when we looked at casinos coming to Sanford, and we went to other communities and found out how it devastated those communities with the police department, the fire department, and the hospitals, and the amount of counseling that needed to have been put into place. I just have concerns about the amount of shops we would then have.
Thank you, Counselor Brink, and I share a lot of your concerns. I do think that they over, that in the time since they, the initial referendum approved the sale of recreational marijuana, that this community did a lot of work, and I think that's why we're still at this point of having to vote to opt in, because I think all of those issues have come to the fore. I think that we finally decided that we would just do the ordinance, and, and it'll have to rise and fall on its own, and we will have a vote, and the vote will, will stand whatever it is. Counselor Martel?
Yeah, hopefully my mic is working now.
It is.
Have there been any discussions with Lebanon or any, anyone that is involved with that industry in Lebanon? Because I believe there's multiple retail shops there, or at least it appears that way. Is that, has that, has there been any discussions there that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware. Well, I think that they've discussed their fees and stuff, and they were in trouble for that, but it was deemed that they were way too high, I guess. Right, Beth?
Okay, thank you.
So the only contact that we've had with Lebanon, you're correct, Madam Mayor, is around the issue of fees. I certainly can call that community and discuss their experience with the, the permitting of the retail sales locations. There, there is an increasing number of communities that we could go to, to have conversations with. You know, Sanford's coming late to the game here, not, that's no value statement there, it's simply a matter of chronology. But there are a number of communities that have had these facilities open for a year or more, and they've actually seen some changes, and I might be able to gather some qualitative data relatively quickly if we picked a couple of comparable communities, and I could make some phone calls and, and chat with the planner there and, and ask them if they would assist with gathering some data from their police department, for example.
I'm assuming you'd look at like Bedford, Saco, Lewis, and South Portland, which are similar in, or a little more similar in size in Lebanon?
Yeah, I, I'm thinking primary, I was actually thinking more of the service center communities. I just would like to keep it at a relatively small list of communities that we. that we reach out to at this point for time management until there's a better sense of the council's direction here.
Okay. Counselor Brink, did you have a follow-up question?
Yes, I did. And
Go ahead.
When we talk about Lebanon, they don't have a police department. They don't have a fire department. So that would be a concern. You can't, we can't even be compared to them. So when it was mentioned finding communities that are very similar to us, I think that is very important to do. Also, we just approved all these places. And I know there are a lot of places who are doing the medical marijuana. Do other communities have that many establishments who are doing the medical marijuana that could then do retail marijuana to anybody? I think that is a big issue.
Can we clarify something, Becky? So the eight sites that we have, five or six of them can have retail options. And we wrote in there that there could only be one store per site. I just want to clarify that.
What does that mean, one store per site?
Like, so if you, if you're in the mill and you have like, I don't know, twenty growers, you can still only have one store?
Okay.
At the site. So I wanted to clarify, because you keep saying that, I want to make sure we're clear on the ordinance.
I didn't, I didn't understand.
Yeah, that's a piece that might have gotten lost as you were reading it. So there's only one, so you would be looking at, is it five, five locations, Beth?
Five locations.
A maximum of five because the other three of the eight sites don't have retail as an option in their zone?
Well, and I also worry about, Anne made a comment too about the social equity piece. And I did look up that information. And I have major concerns about that and the type of legal issues we could be getting into with minority groups coming forth and asking for the equity piece. So I would definitely need a clarification on that. And I know Maine doesn't have it in it, but are we getting, being opened up to other issues? That's what I would like to find out. I don't want to put our city in a place that we regret the decision that we made.
Counselor Hanselman, go ahead.
Thank you. And partly Deputy Mayor Hurley here addressed one of my comments is that we just have to remember and for community members watching, keep in mind that we're talking about eight marijuana sites in general, which have multiple licenses within them. So even though we just approved a long list of licenses, a lot of them are operating out of the same site. So I just want to make sure that the folks at home, so to speak, understood that. I mean, I just wanted to share, you know, I was originally, when I joined the council, not a, you know, not that there was an opposition, but I just wanted to take the process of updating our ordinances for marijuana slowly and carefully and thoughtfully. And when this update, this ordinance that we're looking at currently began to process, I think, two or even three years ago now, you know, I did vote against dedicating staff time to be invested in the updates because I didn't want Sanford to be at the forefront of the cannabis retail industry. And I think at this point, one, there are, also Counselor Brink, there are a lot of studies about the impact of marijuana in communities. But we kind of missed the boat, so to speak, on that. As soon as we opened up our eight locations here in our community, marijuana is readily available. You know, it's very, very easy to get a medical license, so to speak, and access marijuana in our community. There's no lack of access. So, you know, in terms of the impact to our community, I think we're already there. I think we're already seeing it in a multitude of ways. So at any rate, this is kind of just a side comment, I guess. I still struggle with the retail piece in the sense that I just want to make sure that we're not opening up the, you know, other than the eight sites we currently have in our overlay. So I want to make sure we're not opening up other areas. So I hear Deputy Mayor Hurley's comments. And I just want to make sure that we're on the right path as far as that goes. Thank you.
Any other comments by counselors before I make a few comments? Because I am definitely leaning against opting in to sell recreational marijuana in storefronts. I think that we grow plenty of marijuana here for sale places, so there must be a market for it. And I just don't see the upside because the state has never, Bill has yet to provide any kind of incentive for us to do that. We don't get any of the sales tax. We don't get excise tax. We get nothing. So for me, I was anticipating that the state might change that over time, but they have not. So I will consider the comments that we've heard here this evening. But I can tell you that I am pretty sure that I'm going to be voting against opting in in two weeks. But it will be interesting to see where this vote goes. So I think, is there any other comments? Steve, did you have something? Go ahead.
If I could, I'll continue the legal exploration as far as everything that's being discussed here this evening. I just want to back it up in the process, though, that this, our city, as much, if not far more so than anybody else, has put the time in consideration in working with this, I call it, a new industry, right? Because up until a number of years ago, it wasn't even, it wasn't legal in the state. It wasn't recognized as an industry. It is recognized as an industry now. It's licensed accordingly by the state as well as us as a municipality. And all of the work that's gotten us to the point that we are right now on all of that foundational element has been studied by multiple law firms. Multiple law firms, right? So I can remember when we started down working with the industries here, with the budding industry, no pun intended, at that point in time, there was all these legal ramifications. Lawyers flailing their arms, First Amendment, this and that and the other. And we came right down to say to the industry, look, you're no different than any other business. You're new. You weren't allowed before. Our land use tables don't account for you being here. Therefore, you can't. Give us the time to work with you, as we did. And I think the testimony to the success of that, the city working and concertedly crafting the ordinances that have gotten us to this point, is when you have that number of licenses coming before you tonight, there's not public outcry because of odor and crime and everything else. For those levels of industries that are here now, that was a lot of work. That was years of work. And, you know, Beth Delavalle, I want to give her credit for all of the work that she's put into the crafting of these ordinances. It's her knowledge base that has gotten us to the point that we are today. But I do take exception when people start to cry foul about certain aspects of our ordinances and how we've developed those because we've done the slow, steady-paced work with the industries and such and to that. I believe the industries that are, they're here because we set standards. They hit those standards and they operate accordingly. So that's not speaking in favor nor against the retail aspect of this. Only to the process has been very concerted. It's been, every aspect of that has been subject to legal review all along the way. I have, anybody can sue us for any reason, for anything. I have very little fear of any prevailing lawsuit as far as all of the work that the city has done to this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve, and I would agree with that. I think it was worth doing the work, whatever happens in two weeks. If it passes, we've got an ordinance in place. If it doesn't pass, we've done the work and we can put it back in the folder for a while. So any other questions or anything that anybody will need for information in two weeks? You can say it now or you can request that of the city manager? Okay, I don't see anything, so we will go on to the next item. Twenty-two dash one-four-five dash zero-one. Order to discuss city council meeting policy as laid out in the city council rules or procedure pursuant to the current moderate designation for COVID-19 transmission levels for York County as determined by the U.S. CDC. I'm going to ask Steve to present. He's done a lot of research on what all of these transmission levels and what it means with our policies. So go ahead, Steve.
Okay, so pursuant to the city council's rules of procedure, subsection six, specifically B, sub B, in there, I'll get to that in just a moment. Your continued holding of the meetings remotely is tied to the CDC's website and the designation of community transmission levels. So I'll say that right up front. Recent confusion has come forward. I see, I see it in the news and I, I too was confused until today. The light bulb went off today. Pursuant to the York County Emergency Management, Dr. Neal from York Hospital, who participates in that weekly with us, explained the differentiation. And I finally was able to identify and to find my confusion. So let me bring this document up. I grabbed some information off the CDC's website today. So there's two things in play here. Let me expand this out for you. Two things in play here. There's a newly established definition of community levels. The previous database that we always looked at was community transmission, right? So they didn't change the denominators or the variables that go into community transmission. That still stays the same. They establish community levels. That is a different rating criteria and takes a different set of information into account. So the community levels is far, far better explained on the CDC's website than the community transmission is. I cannot find the original definition of community transmission in there. You can find all of the variables and their complex in nature. So the community levels that we're seeing now looks at the current high levels of vaccination and high levels of population immunity from both vaccination and infection. And it does a risk of the medically significant disease, hospitalization, and death stemming from COVID-19. It recognizes that it's greatly reduced for most people. But at the same time, they know that some people in communities, such as the older citizens, people who are immune compromised, and people with disabilities are at a higher risk for serious illness and face challenging decisions navigating that exposure. So it has this new rating criteria, they'll get into in just a moment, but it recognizes that health officials and individuals should consider current information about COVID-19 hospitalizations in the community as well as the potential for strain on the local health system. So this new system looks predominantly at that. It looks at what's going on in your communities at the hospital level and severity and such and to that as the result of what's happening with transmission and the other factors. Whereas the first element that we talked to, it goes to just transmission. So it says that community leaders and individuals should make decisions based upon their local contents and their unique needs. But here are the elements the new community levels looks at. It looks at new COVID admissions per 100,000 population in the last seven days, percent of staffed inpatient beds that are occupied by COVID-19 patients, and the total new COVID-19 cases per 100,000 population in the last seven days in order to determine the community level. So it does speak to transmission because obviously the more transmission you have, the more impact you have. But you can see pursuant to this new rating, pressures have come off in the hospitals as of late. The amount of community testing has gone down dramatically. So the number of new cases documented have gone down. And the rates of vaccination have increased over a period of time, as has the amount of population that have been infected with COVID-19, both vaccinated and unvaccinated. All of those are coming into this new rating. You have to look at the per 100,000 population. If you have fewer than 200 of these cases per 100,000, then you look at the metrics in the top two tiers here. If you have 200 or more, for $100,000, you look at the rating, the factors that are in the second two tiers of this to produce the low, medium, and high designations. That's what we're now seeing out there. When I look at those, and there's further detail in here, if you look at the map on community levels, right? It shows York County as being green. Middle three that were previously designated yellow. These went yellow before. The rest of the state was still labeled red. This is, this is from a week prior, but this is today's data, updated March 10th. So it's good for this one, seven-day period. You can see Rooster County is still orange in there as high. But it has York and Cumberland Counties as being green currently pursuant to this new, new level of rating. So there's that for consideration. It goes into what they recommend as far as low, medium, and high. City's current policy relevant to meetings is based upon community transmission levels. And that is the indicator that was originally used by the U.S. CDC and was put forward for hospital utilization and healthcare facilities. And they're still, they're still pinging their treatment of that on the transmission levels. So we may skip over the policy. And while in our policy, it states that the existence of emergency is hereby defined as linked to, comma, but shall not be limited to, comma, the U.S. CDC, CDC community transmission levels for SARS-CoV-2. So when I continuously went back to my booked in Chrome, I have the booked location of that, I was consistently seeing York County as being red and the news is reporting out, York County's green, right? So why am I seeing the red? That's the why. It's transmissions versus community levels. It's two different designations. Pursuant to today, York County is still high for transmission levels. Cumberland County has dropped to substantial. There's only a single county of Sagittahawk that is in the moderate. That was the confusion. The city's policy is linked to the community transmission levels. That was the first established data set that was out there. That's the, and it's still a maintained data set that's out there. But now they have this new designation of community levels as opposed to transmission levels. I hope that clears up what I can of confusion as to why I can find two different maps, why the media is reporting we've gone green, yet I still find on transmission levels, York County is still red. So the transmission levels looks at the propensity of the strains that are out there currently for transmitting from one individual to the other. That's the transmission level. That's the predominant thing that it's looking at. And in today's conference with State CDC, as well as York County Emergency Management, York Hospital, Maine Health, and others, with Adam Hartwig in there and Amanda Luciano from the State CDC, they're, they recognize the positively improving trends for the state of Maine. And they talk each week in there about New Hampshire and Massachusetts because we lag behind them, right? New Hampshire's, our seven-day positivity rate is actually as equal to or better than New Hampshire right now. But Massachusetts has dropped below 2%. We should see that within two to three weeks here. So we're trending in the positive directions and such and to that. And then in the next breath, they talk about what's happening in Europe and China right now with another strain and the rapidly increasing cases there and estimate as to when the time is that those come here.
I think France and Germany are up as well.
Everything but Spain.
So, you know, I wasn't alone in the confusion. I asked that two weeks ago. Adam Hartwig from State CDC said he cleared it up. Oop, didn't have the answer for me today. He was still saying, yep, people are asking that. Dr. Neal was able to explain that to me in about 30 seconds. The difference between community levels and community transmission in its two different data sets the CDC looks at for those two determinations.
Okay, so Steve, just to be clear, our next meeting, which we have advertised because we had public hearings, we just made the decision based on where things were at that moment that we were going to be virtual and continue to be virtual, at least through that first meeting in April.
Correct. So that meeting has already been advertised because we continue to look at this table that I'm showing you there right now, the transmission levels, which the policy is linked to, still has York County as red. That being said, I would ask you to look at and consider for the second meeting in April, what you might propose that to be because we need to start advertising what we're doing for that particular meeting as well.
You know, and I'll be honest, my concern is that we're going to be in the same position we were last summer when we had two in-person meetings and then had to go virtual again. So if I had to guess, I would say that probably we'll be able to meet in person in that second meeting in April because I think we will do that same pattern. We'll go down and then it will start to go probably, I hate to say it, but I I, I hate to say it, but I think it will go back up again. So let's just say that that's my plan to meet in person, the second meeting in April. Too many public hearings tonight. Sorry. Anybody have any questions or comments about that? Counselor Hanselman, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm just curious. We had a little bit more flexibility on our subcommittee meetings as my understanding of the, our, our procedure, but does that mean we're back to in-person in subcommittees or we continue to maintain those remotely? Okay, we can maintain those remotely.
We are going to continue to redo that remotely. In fact, we're going to explore with the attorney because I think that going forward, there's much more transparency and access for the public when we zoom those subcommittees rather than meeting in a conference room and making people feel like they would have to actually physically be there. So. And I also think that for all of us as subcommittee members, we have found that it's much easier to do, to develop work product when we're not, I'm sorry, but it is, we can do it from wherever we are and that includes staff. I think it's a much more efficient use of staff time. So we'll probably have that discussion going forward, but for the time being, our once a month subcommittee meetings will still remain on Zoom.
So pursuant to your legally reviewed policy that I'm showing here, the highlighted area, subsection three, says all work sessions. So that, that's a subcommittee, all work sessions. And that's why the legal disclaimer was developed. That's why the legal disclaimer is read before every subcommittee meeting that has been legally posted and advertised accordingly. But it says that those shall remain by remote methods only, posted and made available to the public by remote means. That's all in your policy for the duration of the US CDC community transmission levels for Maine for any level except low. So I would anticipate by the second meeting in April, I'm, I believe that York County will be yellow at that point in time by the transmission levels. I do not believe it will go green on the transmission levels that the policy is linked to by that period of time.
Thank you, Steve. But we're still going to explore the possibility of how we might be able to still do our subcommittee meetings remotely as long as we keep transmitting them and recording them if possible.
The state legislature continues to look at this. I think there's still work outstanding on that. Think what, where the difficulty is, a community such as Sanford, we've made the investment in the technology. It's, we've used it extensively. It's working well in our community. Some of the smaller communities in the more rural areas that do not have broadband connectivity, don't have the same level of investment and such under that, struggle more with that technology piece and are less, less favorable as far as voting those permanent amendments forward versus what we have here currently.
But they still haven't finished that bill yet that they were working on.
That is my understanding, yes.
Counselor Hanselman.
And I know we're all getting tired, but I just had to say that I think we've done, Steve, to your point, an amazing job doing our Zoom meetings virtual. And in some ways I've seen an increase in participation from the public and access. And so I think it's actually been a very positive outcome of the pandemic for us here in Sanford. And then I'm actually personally excited to get back to meeting in person and look forward to doing that. But I also feel like if we need to flip back to remote, we can just do that very seamlessly. So I just wanted to comment on that. And I, I kudos to the staff and Steve, all of your efforts that made it possible for us to do this so well. Thank you.
Counselor Martel.
Yeah, I'd like to mirror some of the same comments. I think it has worked really well. But I do look forward to meeting in person at some point. There's, I think there's some value there. That definitely helps with collaboration as well. So I think we get to get back into that at some point.
Okay. Any other counselors? Diane Conley, you had a comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, how's this? You talk about the council and stuff like that. What about the planning board?
Well, I think that'll all follow the same policy, correct, Steve? I would say that probably your meetings in April would be able to be by Zoom, but then we'll have to revisit that.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't think we need a, a vote on this or this is just for information only, correct, Steve?
Correct. The, the, the only voted action would be if you were going to amend your policy.
Okay. So 22-122-01, ordered to authorize closure of William Oscar Emery Drive, Riverside Avenue and Pioneer Avenue from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday, June 4th, 2022 for the Sanford Bike Fest with a rain date of Sunday, June 5th, 2022. And luckily there's a rain date this year. I don't think, I think we all have had a lot of discussion. I'm not saying they can't, but let's, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
A motion by Deputy Mayor Hurley, a second by Counselor Hanselman, discussion by the council or questions of, I think, is Lee here to, to tonight for this?
He is.
Lee, did you have something that you wanted to add? It's basically the same as it was when we were going to do it the last time, correct?
Hope you're muted, Lee.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been three years since the, the last one that we, it was the first one. And we got off to a good start, but we'd like to redo it bigger and better. It's a seven mile ride from the YMCA down through the downtown to the new high school, turn around there and come back. It's a great way to experience the city in a new way. We, we are trying to create sort of anchors of activity. At the YMCA, there'll be a bike jam at the skate park. At the high school, we have some specialty bikes that will be available for people to try. We have Zip Zamarki from Elliott. He's got a basement full of antique bikes. He's going to bring up a trailer of old bikes for people to try. There's some really unusual bikes. Not, not these high wheelers that are kind of dangerous, but just some unique bikes. And so that'll be something we can do at the high school end. I think one of the scout groups is going to do a bike rodeo there as well. Coming back again through the downtown. We're going to try to get some music and food vendors, some of the local restaurants, bring out some food to create a festive atmosphere at the Gateway Park area. So yeah, just a great way to experience the town in a new way. And hope we get a good turnout. We've got, we've got a good start this year. So I think we'll be able to get good outreach out there to spread the word. So any, happy to answer any questions people have. We will have ride marshals. We will have a first aid station. And the police department will be staffing the primary intersections to allow cross-traffic to come through. But the course itself would be closed to cars for a four hour period.
Thank you, Lee. Any questions or comments from counselors? Hardly seems possible that it'll be summer soon though, or at least really nice weather.
Lee, could we have, could we have out of those antique bikes, a Schwinn with the chopper forks, cheetah slick and a banana bar on it that I grew up on?
I will, I will ask, I will ask Zip. He does have some 1950s bicycles, yes. Not the ones with the banana seats and the high handlebars.
I had a yellow banana seat bike from the seventies. That's what we need. Yellow and green, like avocado green.
Bright color.
With the wheelies on it. Awesome.
I'll, I'll check when, I'll check his collection.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any, no more discussion? We will call a roll. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Okay, we're on the last item, guys. 22-146-01, ordered to discuss and vote on whether to authorize a suggested police cruiser design change. Ah, who's going to do this this evening? Is it Chief Anderson?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Eric Small will be.
Deputy Chief.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. I'm last on the agenda. I see some tired eyes out there, so I'll try to make this quick. It's tough to follow up the banana seat conversation, but I'm going to ask you to reminisce a little bit about our old police cars in this presentation. Tonight I bring before you a change to the, the police cars, which were brought forward to us by the workforce at the Sanford Police Department. And it's really a multifaceted reason why we want to make this change. In 2009, we changed our cars from, I'm not looking what's before you right now, but I'm hoping that on your screen is the old police car, which was blue with our patch on the side and our vehicle number on the, the pillar of the car. And in 2009, we went to the black and white police car. Now, the car isn't actually black and white. It's a black police car with a white door wrap on both the passenger and driver's doors, both sides, which really lends to resale value of the car when we go to sell it at the end. Sometimes you've probably seen the black and white old police cars driving around that were painted that way. So rather than do that, we've, we, we did the, the white wrap. And what we found from our experience with the white wrap is that they just didn't hold up. A lot of dings in the wrap, a lot of color change in a very short period of time. A lot of peeling, a lot of peeling of the decals which were applied to the wrap. And they just didn't hold up, you know, very well. Within a few months, they, they looked really, you know, really well worn. And early, maybe mid 2021, officers got together and discussed some changes to our police cars. And where we, where we ended up right now was, you know, going back to the old style where we just had a car with our patch on the side and our number on the car. And when I, when I went to, to, to go get the wraps applied this year and did the cost analysis on it, I broke that down in the backup, but roughly about $1,900 per vehicle to wrap the car and put all the decals on it versus the, the patch on the door with a local vendor be, you know, around, applied about $150 a car. So quite the cost savings. I think it would also be a saving, sorry, it'd also be a beneficial, better look, better quality, longer lasting, better visual for our police cars. I did a little, I met up with an officer today who worked for our department in, well, the sixties. He's, he was 82 years old and he told me that he remembered back when he was driving what is known as a Kaiser Frazier 1960s police car. Now, I didn't even know what that was. But at that time, they had the patch on the door. So officers are asking to go back to the, you know, the, the former look of the vehicles. It's, it's simple, but yet traditional for our department. And law enforcement, much like the fire service and, you know, other public safety professionals is entrenched in a lot of tradition. So they've asked to go back to that. And that's what I present for you today. And I'm open to any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from counselors? Steve, do you have a comment or?
No, I don't, I don't have any comment. I mean, design is always subject to the eye and it's in the eye of the beholder's opinion. Definitely a cost savings on the vehicles. I mean, what this, this, the mock-up that I had there earlier, I mean, it doesn't show all of the details as far as the light bars and such under that would go on there. As was discussed at the committee level, they wanted the vehicles to be readily recognizable. So they will stand out within the community. So I'll.
Right. We'd make, sorry, Steve. Yeah, we'd make no changes. The light bars would be outside of the vehicles and the lights would be on the outside of the vehicles. It's simply a, you know, the change of the vinyl, removing the vinyl wrappings and, you know, really just taking the, the amount of decals and vinyl decals we put on the vehicles down a notch and going back to like the blue cars that we had, you know, from the sixties to 2009, the best I could figure out.
Yeah, we always like to go backwards, don't we?
Yeah, yeah, sometimes I think. But you know, you know, the chief and I, we talk and it's really about the, the people inside the cars. I'm sure he's going to agree with me on this one. And the officers driving them aren't changing. They're, they're, you know, amazing crew people. So the same people be driving around and providing excellent law enforcement service. So that's, that's the.
I just wanted to make sure I could still see them from far enough away.
We'll put the lights on so that you can get a visual. Find the spotlight on you a little bit, something like that.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. I thought Counselor Martel had his hand up first and then Deputy Mayor Hurley.
I did have a quick question. Would these be a switch over of all the fleet? Or would it just be anything new we purchased? So they would kind of phase out the old style as those get rotated out.
Yeah, great question. No, no, it would be a, a switch over. We have three cars sitting in our parking lot right now. Generally, we, we buy three cars a year on the CIP and it would take probably about three years to have the fleet back to completely, you know, all the same.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
I'm okay with it. I know, I know it's kind of like, should we really, I don't know. I just don't care enough. And I think it looks fine with the plain and just the decal. And it seems like, I don't know. Every once in a while you have to change up your look, I think. And that's not, we changed our logo at the city. I'm not, I have no problem with it.
Any other counselors have comments before I call on Diane Conley? Diane, go ahead.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have a question for Officer Small. On the back and the front of the cruisers, if you're looking from, let's say farther away, looking for a police officer or a police car, are you still going to have where it says police on the back of the front so people can readily see you? If I was looking for a police car, I wouldn't be looking for a patch. I'm looking for something that says police on it.
The lights?
No, not the lights. Not when I'm needing help, you know, if I'm actually looking for a police officer on the street.
Yeah, the, all I can say Diane is the, the old cruiser did not have that on the front or back. The lights, I would agree with more, are kind of the giveaway that it's a police car. And they, you know, we went with that for over 50 years in my research. So no, that was not part of the plan.
Okay, thank you very much. I like, I like the pictures. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion to approve. Sorry.
Okay. I missed who did, who was first.
Counselor Martel can take that one.
All right, I will, the motion is by counsel, from Counselor Martel to approve. Is there a second? Deputy Mayor, I mean, Counselor Hanselman?
I'll second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, I will call the roll. Counselor Brink?
Yes.
Counselor Martel?
Yes.
Counselor Hanselman?
Yes.
Counselor Stackpole?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. That is unanimous of all those present. Diane, I'm assuming you don't have your hand up again. It's just up left over, right? Thank you. Okay, we're, I actually didn't think we were going to get this far, guys. So we did really well tonight. We had a big agenda. We got through it.
Are you going to fess up to the police officers? We specifically put the car at the end just in case.
I'm sorry that we did that, but that's why. Because you were the one that we figured could go another couple of weeks if we didn't get. get to it.
I've been here the whole time. I didn't give up.
I know. I apologize, but Counselor Brink, council member comments? Do you have anything? Becky?
Just two things. First of all, with tonight's meeting, especially in the last couple of meetings, it is very exciting to see all the wonderful things that are happening around Sanford. It was the, well, including the big thing of the parks tonight, you know, I think that's going to make a big difference. I'm just really impressed with how much Sanford citizens are willing to do for their community to beautify it. Also, I'm very impressed with the amount of volunteers who are willing to serve on the charter commission, charter committee to help with that. I think that's amazing that people are still, with all that they've been through the last two years, they're willing to volunteer. So I'd like to thank all those volunteers out there. I really appreciate it.
Thanks, Becky. Counselor Martel?
I don't have anything for tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Hanselman?
Somebody's going to be mad that I scooped this up, but just a reminder that it is a public hearing that's coming Thursday for the Budget Committee. It's always great, I think, for councilors to make sure they're listening and watching on YouTube or live stream that meeting because it's really helpful in preparation for when it comes to the council level. So just throw that out there. And then exciting things happening at the Sanford Performing Arts Center coming up on April 1st, April 2nd, and the 3rd, the high school production of Mamma Mia. So if you haven't gotten your tickets, you still can, StanfordPAC.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Hanselman. Counselor Stackpole?
I just want to say thanks for being made a part of the Charter Review Committee. It's always an honor to serve the community in that capacity. So thanks for the support on that.
You're saying thank you now. Wait till after you've done it a few times.
I've been there.
I know you have. It can only get better, right?
Absolutely.
Deputy Mayor Hurley, any comments this evening?
Ann took my thunder. I was going to mention the public hearing. Other than that, no, I got it.
That's what I was going to mention too. So I have no comments this evening. Future agenda items from councilors? Counselor Brink?
Not at this time.
Counselor Martel?
I only have one thing. I think at some point, we need to discuss filling the open seats that was recently made vacant.
Yes, I plan to put that on the agenda sometime in April to discuss whether or not we intend to fill that seat or not.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hanselman?
Nothing, thank you.
Counselor Stackpole?
Nothing this evening, thanks.
Deputy Mayor Hurley?
No, nothing this evening. Jonathan, we had discussed it. It was a respectful distance, I think, is what we're looking at.
Okay, and I have no agenda items. And I will say good night to everyone and thank you for all the work this evening. And thank you for all those who stuck around. And I'll declare us adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.